Ryan.
Father, thank you for this day, for allowing us to be here and have an opportunity. The board of the questioner, God, us and everything that we do. We've made the right decisions for the town in Jesus's name, amen.
Yeah, good, you're wanting to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh. Mr. Mr. Boone, would you be the title of the unit?
Certainly. To advance the framework for our success, the balance dominance, dynamic partnerships, and an engaged community.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Hunter Boone, if you recite the Silas City Vision, etc.
Yes, sir. Silas City is a safe, prosperous, and vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a globally competitive society.
Alright, adjustments to the agenda.
Uh, yes, ma'am, we have three adjustments to the agenda, uh, two are noted at your table, and three went more on the consent. For updated seaward VIP scheduling, uh, be required for the reimbursement, uh, agreement and new business. Uh, we'd like to add a presentation under number four, you know, people from the Love Creek Corporation, uh, picking a hole in the park. And then we will add a closing section for the kind of ten point run, uh, for the second day file.
Alright. Thank you motionally approving adjustments to the agenda, second.
Yeah, motion and second, need discussion or comment. Here you go, all over the papers say aye, aye, all over the white sign.
Thank you motionally approving it, London.
Aye. Motion and second, need discussion or questions. Here you go, all over the papers say aye, aye, all over the white sign.
Thank you motionally approving the consent, gentlemen.
Aye. Motion and second, need discussion or questions. Here you go, all over the papers say aye, aye, all over the white sign. One representative will. Alright, so. That's it, go right into the present, go right into the presentation. Add it on to it, and I think the presentation is gonna have, or correctly if I'm wrong there, it's gonna be related to, uh, old business, I think.
That, well, I'll leave that to you.
Okay, alright. At this time, who would like to be first? Give me some of your name and your address.
My name is Beth Scott, I live in the state, you like to trail in Pittsburgh. Um, so my kids would want to travel through the. I am a volunteer for the Urban Society for Invertebrate Conservation. I'm working on a bumblebee survey of Adam County. One of the sites I have surveyed this summer is the Bowling Lane Park. That's one of six sites. I surveyed five of those sites, but. And my survey at Bowling Lane Park had the most diversity of any of the sites in the town. We found three different species of bumblebees out of the four that we've seen in the past fifteen thousand. And we also saw male bumblebee, which is a great unusual sight. So I want to speak in behalf of the work that you've done promote the national world in that, in that part. Because it's working. It's working better than any other site we thought. Know that site. Would provide the citizens of your city a resource for learning. The schools go there and see things that you can't see other places. Your citizens can see their things there, they can't see other places. When we were surveying, there was a little boy with his insect net going out and that contains out. It's a great opportunity there that you won't have if you know it. And it can be like. Thank you.
Thank you. Father, give your name and address, please.
My name is Captain Dineger, I live at one twenty-four Goldberry Lane, um, Pittsburgh. Um, I've been here working in chat in, um, inside the city with the Love Creek Forest stewards since two thousand and fourteen, I believe. Um, when the stewards first started working. And I was very active in, uh, this installation of the trapper at Bowling Lane Park. I was the coordinator for the volunteers, we had hundreds and hundreds of hours of volunteers that helped install that trapper. Um, I did not prepare a specific presentation on for the team, the afternoon came to answer any questions that come up from the board. But I'm happy to kind of talk offhand for a moment. Um, I monitored the creek that goes through Bowling Lane Park before any other work was done on that, um, in the park. Um, I, uh, I'm certified to look at aquatic insects. Um, which are very good indicators of the health of the creek. Uh, Love Creek is impaired for the lack of aquatic life. And that's primarily measured by what aquatic insects are in, in the creeks. And, um, it also is, um, impaired for the lack of, um, infections of it. Uh, when I first monitored the creek in Bowling Lane Park before the buffers and the weapons were put in. There were only studs and black fly larva in the creek. Uh, that is not true today. Um, within, um, the first year after the weapons had been put in, we started seeing dragonfly larva. Um, now this last, um, spring when we did our, our creek piece, um, field day, which was done in April. Uh, we found with the children out there, uh, mayflies and stoneflies. Um, as well as a lot of other aquatic insects like gamsel flies. But mayflies and stoneflies are some of the most sensitive insects that we can find in creeks. So that's an indication the creek health there is much better and that it is to come, uh, a place where you can serve and provide, um, nursery for downstream streams. Which we're in need of in the forties, that everybody's been hearing. Um, so the buffer is working. Um, we have seen over the years, you know, uh, uh, every year there needs to be work on that buffer to remove invasive, um. Invasive species, uh, there's a lot of trees that are coming in that we don't want to see in the buffer. Uh, we've met with town staff, I just went down and checked the buffer, um, before I came to this meeting. Those, those trees are still there, there's still work that needs to be done in the buffer. Um, we've offered every spring and fall to help put together volunteers to help town staff and the network. Um, that has happened a number of times. Uh, this year we have not been able to find a day of good work for town staff, so we've offered a number of times. Uh, I think Jack met us and she does a, um. Uh, a list of, of what, what meetings that we've had with town staff this, this year, this town year about Bowling Lane Park. And that has come up for discussion. Um, we met with them, um, in person down at. At the park in, uh, the law. And, um, specifically we talked to them about what can be done for the veterans. If they go back to the maintenance agreement, but it's fine, it's stayed in there that they can clear the, the slopes that go down to the weapon. Um, that has not been done, that's something they, at that meeting, um, seemed enthusiastic about doing because it would clear up the appearance of the weapon. A whole lot, um, those weapons were planted, there's no graffiti slope, but they have grown as increased because they have not been maintained. Um, we met, um, we being the project partner, the original project partner with, uh, North Carolina State who funded this project on Friday. They are very concerned about the potential of those buffers being removed. They said that they had been one of the best projects in the state. And it would be, uh, we were bad mark both for the state and for the town of Charlotte City to have those buffers removed. It would affect any future funding from the state, it would be something that they would have to look at. Um, but they, they were very concerned about it. Um. So, I guess, um, and then also Silas City has buffer rules. That's an intermittent stream. You know, buffer rules right now that are very deep for your intermittent streams, that's a fifteen foot buffer. If you remove that buffer, you will be breaking your own buffer rules at this point because it's gonna sabotage buffer. Um, which will make, I don't know how, how that works, and you guys are the ones that are enforcing it. But it will, you know, give a wrong impression to your landowners that currently are getting in trouble when they break their buffer rules. And new developments, and they break their buffer rules. Um, so it, I think what has happened is from our standpoint, but it seems like there's been a lot of fast changes. And we haven't been able to coordinate they clean up. Um, and, um, I know things have changed with how maintenance is being done. And so the maintenance that has happened, um, in the last couple of years, when things kind of calm down, with other comments, um, this hasn't been able to happen. The other thing that I've noted a lot is when we're out at the park doing our events or just out walking and, and seeing how things are going. We get lots of positive comments about the buffer from the people that are using the park. Um, and, and, um, I think a lot of comments might be coming from those people that are driving that. Not exactly sure what to do about that, um, but. Come down with the net. Do you have any questions for me that I can help with?
What trees did you want to cut down?
So when we first, um, when we first went to establish the buffer, there were a lot of, uh, sweet gum trees in Bowling Lane Park. And that was something that was a maintenance problem for the park, and people were not happy about all those sweet gums. It, it's a good idea. Um, and so, uh, we actually helped, um, with removing funding to remove on those trees and replacing them with other trees. Um, and, but there is still feedback of sweet gums in the park, so there are sweet gums coming up in the buffer. There are also ashes that are coming up in the buffer that could be removed. And ashes just tend to be very, very invasive. So those could be removed, and we, we, we spoke with, uh, um, with the maintenance group about those in July. Um, and we certainly are willing, if they have trouble with, um, identification of those, of sending someone out to help with that identification. Uh, primarily the, um, the volunteers that we can bring out, those volunteers can be used to come out and cut back vegetation and doing pruning. Of the native vegetation, we, we can work with those volunteers and say like, the goldenrod, they, you know, we get quite a dig out there, we can cut back the goldenrod. There's a lot of roses out there, um, native roses, swamp roses, that some of those can be trimmed back if they're, they're growing, enjoying a thing, and they're really beautiful in the spring. But those can be cut back, so our volunteers can help with kind of cutting back the native volunteers. But treating any invasives where if you want to cut it and then paint it with, uh, uh, a pervive, that needs to be done by town staff. Because we don't, we can't license the, uh, volunteers to do that.
But it is something you could help them to identify that particular.
Yeah, absolutely, and we have offered, we have offered to do that and are still very willing to do that. And I, I know, I know things are changing as far as what that would be and what, but we, we are quite willing to, um. Mine, uh, so I work for Biosynthesis, which is a for-profit, um, but my business partner, Karen Paul, is a native plant specialist. She has a PhD in, in, um, um, Susan Goldston, who is the soil water company, and is also, um, knows the, that vegetation pretty well. I, I do as well, but not, not to the same level as they do. So we definitely have people who can help them out.
Oh, so, um, what, what are the optimal times of the year to do that? Because obviously it's got to be done on a, on a frequent basis.
It would be nice to do it twice a year, to do it in the spring and the fall, and so it should have been done in spring. It would have been a great, uh, done somewhere in the spring to primarily get out the invasive trees in the current. Um, and, and then the fall right now would be nice, anytime from like September, early October, you know, this, pretty much right now. So, um, we did one year come and do it, um, the end of August. I mean, it would be nicer not to do it in the heat of the summer, but probably late August, then early October for that second month. But the spring one, you know, like April, April meant, but April would be, would be.
Is there someone you could, you could flag, like, survey or tape or something?
We.
So that makes sure we don't miscommunicate at the wrong time.
Yeah, we could. That would go and flag the trees that need to be removed. It would probably still be nice to move with the town staff and then do it. Yeah, just but so that one that we leave or later they don't finish it up. Um, but there is a lot right now that contact can go and do with those weapons without anybody being there. Because they can pretty much take down all the vegetation that is along the, the thing of the weapons, the slopes.
I think that that's, I think that's probably been, I think, the, the most of the miscommunication is what they can and can't do. I think that there was some concern that they can't go anywhere close to it. And then, you know, it, it leads to that miscommunication.
Now, and, and I think that's part of the shuffling between departments, because there is a maintenance plan that, that clearly states that. Um, Love Creek Forest stewards has a website on the town website. And, um, under that project, there is that maintenance plan, so it is also right there. Um, but, you know, probably most people don't know that, especially if you're, you're near the apartment.
I go over there every morning, varies between eighteen, room of, as many times as I can, and I talk to people, it's normally the same people. You have their, they're normally the same people, and I've asked what, what, what was their opinion, and they're very concerned with all the growth.
Yeah.
And with what can be hide, like if they go over there, it's close to the yard, it seems like something hiding there. Children even fall in there, parents have, have, have that kind of concern that their child, you know, it only takes a second either the way. You have children, you know that, and you, they're, someone you're not supposed to.
Yeah, and I think that the areas that maybe people would be worried about wasn't falling again, or getting hidden in there would be along the wet. And I, I think I, I agree that that ought to be cleaned up.
You're talking about the slope?
Mm-hmm, the slope, yeah. And the water down in the weapons, now the weapons are working properly, it would not be, but, but still, you would not, you know, an understanding. But, um, so that would be a favor, you tell, um. If you're behind the crate myrtles. Now, the crate myrtles. Um, Joseph Field, yeah, Joseph Field, um, planted those great myrtles to define the buffer width. And so basically everything behind the great myrtles, which is fifteen feet to the center of stream, should be left.
It can be pruned.
It can be, it can be pruned, it just cannot be mowed down.
But that's the concern of the citizens is how that grows.
Right, and that, and that is sometimes pruning, just pruning that kind of these ones. But, and that is also where a lot of the invasive trees are, that should be deemed under.
So I'm saying, how, how, I guess, how low can you go?
It, it depends on the season and it depends on the vegetation. So with the goldenrod right now, and this also is something, unfortunately, I think, um, uh, Susannah Goldston was going to be on the fall and resumed, but she, she hasn't been able to join. She would be the person that could answer that best, but I was out there a lot of times, they were cutting that goldenrod at that, and we were cutting a third off.
Is that something the volunteers can do?
Yeah.
And, and we could take care of the trees that are not supposed to be there? And anything from the crate rolls up to Raleigh can be mowed?
On, on, okay, are we talking about the bank that's on the other side of the?
Well, you said banks, I'm assuming you meant the water off the Raleigh.
No, she means that the bank of the, of the stream, the stream banks, so it's different.
No, I, okay, well, I mean, the weapons. Okay, so there are two, and I know I'm really wishing I had a map.
So are you talking about Dolphins Street or Raleigh Street, son?
So there's Raleigh Street.
Right.
Raleigh Street and Raleigh Street, there is a bank right there, it was down to, to the, the walking trail.
Yeah.
That bank we haven't been talking about, but now that I'm kind of, I'm starting to talk about it a little bit. That was actually the first project that was funded, the CCAT money from Soil Water Conservation District, when we first started working on the park. Back in two thousand, I think, fourteen. Um, and that was seeded with, um, with grasses that have very deep roots. Because I, I don't know if any of you remember, but that bank was there, and, and there was a lot of soil that was running off that bank down into the walking trail. So that bank can be cut, but it should not be cut. Um, quite as much as the rest of the grass in the, in the, in the park. We talked to, um, to maintenance crew about that this last walk, because it, I mean, this last walk, because it is starting to get warmer. So that's one bank. Then you go to the walking trail. If you're, if you're still thinking of coming down from, from Raleigh Street, you get to the walking trail. You cross over the walking trail, and then you have the stream buffer that's behind the great myrtles, okay? That's fifteen feet, all the stream bank behind the great myrtles. There are some invasive trees in there, like, uh, sweet gum and ash trees that could be removed. And it could help town staff with identifying those. Some of that buffer would be pruned back, because like, right now I just went out there, the swamp rose is getting past the great myrtles. Those could be pruned back. There is, um, in there, um. Goldenrod, that if it's not cut back at all during the year, will get quite tall. And that's pretty tall right now, that could be cut back and it would still do well. But when I say cut back for the goldenrod, just make a third of it or a half of it, depending on how big it is. And that's something Susannah would be out there with volunteer saying, let's cut it back as much, and it would still bloom, um, if you did that. Um.
But that's on the, as you come down the Raleigh Street bank, you get crate myrtles, you get the walking trail, you got more crate myrtles.
Yeah, so anything that's between the crate myrtles should be left alone except for maybe some light trees.
When you say between crate myrtles, I need you to.
So you, so there is, you guys, you know, gosh, I wish I had drawn a map, I hadn't thought about.
You're talking about between the crate myrtles and the, and the ponds? Between the.
There's no, there's no crate myrtles around the weapon.
The crate myrtles on each side of the, um.
Or, or walking track, right.
Yeah, it's the walking track, then the crate myrtles, then the tree, then more crate myrtles, then I get it like that.
Yeah, so the, 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 the weapons have the, um, sensors, the white fence.
Right, that's why I call them ponds.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, um, so those, that, the banks that come down from those white fences.
Okay, those are the.
Those are the.
I thought you were talking about the bank off Raleigh Street, when you said the bank.
Yeah, yeah, the bank to the weapon. Or the slope, let's call it the slope, the slope that goes down to the weapon.
Listen, that is on the.
Um. And, and, you know, I, I, I hear. Whenever you talk about buffers and wood and stuff, there are people that give thanks for it. Um. I remember before that walk was there, when I was first monitoring and looking at that site. Did that stream, when it was not having a buffer on it? If you, and it was being mowed down, the bank of the stream? That is, that is, that stream, it is, it is designated intermittent, but even right now it's flowing. And most streams that are intermittent right now are flowing, it has a lot of groundwater in it. Um, so before we put that up, Brad, if you walked the edge of that, you would go up to almost your knee and muck. And it wasn't evident because it was being mowed almost to the bank, but the grass there and, and the muck was very, very hot. That is no longer there. Because those trees and that vegetation is holding that soil in place. And now I have a nice stream bed, and that is why you can actually go in there and pick up a rock and find an aquatic insect. Because that habitat has been so much improved, the insects could not live in that muck that was being created by, because there was nothing holding those things in place. That is what our weedy vegetation does. Is it, is it shores up those, um, those banks, up the stream bank, and it's doing exactly what it should be doing. Um. It, I mean, also there's a lot of other things about filtration. I don't know if you guys remember, also there's motor pipes from the parking area, it used to go straight into the creek. And that is why that creek doesn't flood away in that section, because instead of flooding the creek. Um, where, where the, the upper, the, the weapon is, the bigger one? That's where the, 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 um, bike down used to be, and that used to flood to the point that the water would come up to where the swings were. Like, not, not just the swing set, but actually to the springs themselves, it was so, you know. And this was not the same. So, so, and I know there are, um, concerns, but there are concerns that, that were happening then, that the town was dealing with. There are no laws that happen. Um, there, there definitely is maintenance that we've done. Um, there are a number of educational signs on those, um, white fences that we created as part of the park. Uh, as, as part of the, uh, stormwater involved. Um, and that, um, white fence was put in, um, by the town, because of some of the concerns that people had to kind of delineate that area. Those signs and that white fence would do the cleaning, that would also make the park look a lot better. Any, any other questions?
So maybe you can give the coordinated work volunteers to go to their.
We have been trying.
We have to have a town staff, because you said you knew what, you have someone, ask what needs to be cut, they can tell you what needs to be said.
We need to have permission from, from, from someone from the town, but do they have to physically do that? That you will need to have, you have a vote, so.
If they get permission, go and do that, I say, on Saturday. Then we need a town staff, if they're going to cut what, they, excuse me.
What we, what we have done before is not wrong with that.
Well, if, I'm just, that's my take of work.
Um.
Um. Would a town staff person have to clear every part of things, not? Put the things that needs to be done.
So all the maintenance of other parks through public works now? I would just ask if you just get told in the town a day that we're, that you're looking to do that? We'll coordinate that with public works director and make sure he, or like the staff or the, it's fair.
That would be through.
That would be through.
Okay, and how we know?
So, yeah.
One of the suggestions that, that we might is, you know, to, because we've had, obviously had a lot of staff turnover. Um, it would be good for the people to have a maintenance, sort of like a passed out lobby maintenance log that people can refer back to so that we don't get in a situation again.
And you and Bob, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
And to go along with that, uh, I think Suzanne was going to make some draw a picture of some of the invasive species and some of the species that can be carefully pruned back. Because I think one of the concerns that I've heard so far is the maintenance side of it is nobody, you know, uh, you go look at it and know what it is, but including that, and nobody else has done what they're doing. And she was going to make a.
I think, I think something that we, we, none of us realize either is that, um, when we, for the first few years that this was there, when he had an employee Greg weapons. And he uses native plants. And I think, I think, um, that part that you don't have Greg anymore, that's also something that stood out that we. So, but, but we can create another Greg weapon just through some education, it's not, you know.
And you, well, I think you do have. As a maintenance sheet from the, you know, and because turnover has been such, and same people not there, it's probably got lost. Something for another that it is out, but if it's there, something where it would say.
Well, I can, I can talk about how, how far the community and see what we can get done.
Thank you for your answer.
You're welcome. Can, can I assure the state that the buffer is at least for right now?
We, uh, we're gonna have, it's only in here after presentation. And once, and we'll be yours to insert, you can be better key than that right now, it will be a little bit premature.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, well, I will look back and see what's, what's on that. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to talk.
You want to go down to? Well, you usually not at law court. Name and address.
Elizabeth Coran, nine oh five, West Plana Avenue, I live in Silo, Southern Capitol Field. I just want to say, I would like to be part of the solution and not part of the problem, so I'm happy to volunteer and I can get some other people to come and help. If you will, let me know when you want somebody to come. Because yard work is big. And I know most of the points, so I'm happy to, to do that. I think that this is not rocket science. This is middle school ecology, this is soil erosion. You stand in the sand of the ocean and the water comes down, it erodes all around you and underneath you. And that's what's been doing over there. Now, this acts like cheese parlor, you know? You're spraying it up, slowing all that stuff down and building it back up. It often is clean, filtering, the runoff, and you get these films from the oils and stuff that come off the roads and come down into that. By the time it comes out the other side, that water's cleaner. So I personally think the only other thing, because I've been over there looking too. It's a whole lot more interesting to walk around and see birds and butterflies and dragonflies and bumblebees and other pollinators over there than it is to walk around in that dirt trap with all that bare grass and all the trash. So the trash is getting picked up, you guys, it's all, it's just, I'm sure that's a little make believe too, but that's my other hat, this crap, lady, I'm the bad lady who walks around and cleans up half of it. So, that is to be done as well. But I would support the fact that we should keep it. Um, if it's down regular maintenance schedule, we talked about all reasons why. I want your part of the solution. Thank you.
I think it was that complete presentation, thank you. All right, well, we thank you for your interest in this matter and your presentation is good for us. All right. So, that is now good, old business, five point one, Golden Lane.
Uh, thank you negative, uh, draw attention, that's kind of lead and protect him. Uh, thing we tell you that after our last meeting, we'll be seven, uh, the Golden Lane Park. I asked Jackie and I to put a memo together. I think a lot of what's, maybe you can go hard and reference in the presentation. Uh, any day that there are grants, uh, currently funding aspects of the Golden Lane Park and there's been a numerous meetings with staff and, and others, stuff, and which there is also a meeting on Friday, September fifteenth, with the P my Conservation Council. That, uh, is, is a little missing DQ, so that to seek further guidance from the board of commissioners on how we're just proceeding from our. We'll file with Dr. Warren, continue discussing.
Well, I think if we can get it trimmed back, we can just take a look at it after it gets trimmed back. I mean, I, I just I just get a lot of complaints about the look of it. I think people like the walking track, I think people like the picnic shelter and the playground, I just get a lot of complaints about how lean it looks, that overgrown it looks. Maybe we can do some, and things are being suggested, then, um, revisit it. Once that's done, maybe that'll, um, maybe that'll make the citizens happy to live with it.
And, and I also think that, um, you know, to, to the senior point, I mean, we got, we got a, a buffer ordinance. And if we're gonna violate that, I can hold anyone else accountable. So I think that, that's one of the things, we, we have to live by our own, you know, um, as, as we expect everyone else to. The other thing around that, I think that, um, you know, we, we, obviously we've talked a lot about the maintenance and what needs to happen, and I think that that's the right thing. And, um, yeah, we also don't need any more, um, bad blood with P E Q, so in that, uh, we, you know, we need to take that seriously as well.
That's exact, and, and if you look on it cheap, I mentioned, uh, Suzanne on the land and some of our, uh, folks are, are, there's a couple of things I found out with Golden Lane Park over the whole year period, probably our most used park. And it gets a lot, a lot of use. And when you, if you go over there and look at it, I think I know it looks, going to get a lot of complaints, but, but you take a look at it, but you, there's no one to do it. I think that the reason it's gotten to the shape and the design is because we just haven't been doing the maintenance on it like it should have been done. And, uh, I think that I agree that we should probably do something, look at it, go back, because I think that's the much goldenrod over there, they'll, you know. And that's one of the things that needs to be taken care of, get that out of the way. And then we can trim backs from that other, I think it's going back a tremendous amount of dirt. And like, uh, Mr. Hay said, this is something I need to begin, he's talking about, he'll give us the money back, um. But there's all the credits that we've gotten, the DQ, um, to, or, uh, helping impair streams and stuff. And like you said, we don't need to rub their noses in it anymore than we already have. But my thought is, let's, let's do some maintenance on it. Take a look at it again later after that's done, and I will revisit that for.
So I, I don't want to worry anybody about that, I just want to make sure that, I heard the staff, uh, we'd like to be coordinated staff, volunteers on a day, clean this up. And we'll keep a maintenance log of some sort, make sure that we don't run into shit again, we've got a direction on how to keep it up twice a year. Yeah, correct.
Okay, so, and, and to the, if, if we can coordinate with the barshed, they, I think you have, you have a bunch of volunteers.
We have.
You've got volunteers.
Down there is also very, we've been working with that, and also the communities in school. Is very interested in getting ready without the help of maintaining, maintaining buffers. So we do, and then soil and water has their own volunteer, so we, we do, we have volunteers that can help, but we have to. You know, set them and for them.
Yeah, if we can bring them in today, give them enough time where they can organize their volunteers, I think they're great.
And encourage them, I mean, to, to the right point. It's middle school ecology, we need, we need to get the middle schools, maybe get the schools involved to help, you know, to, to come out and, and use this as a living, as a living laboratory.
Got the direction, you think?
I do, and our public works director here is here at first hand, I think we're, we're very good role, that's.
Okay, everybody's taking names, here's the, okay, all right. So that takes care of that. Uh, we just move on to the next one, five point two, agreement for infrastructure, second and B, reading.
Uh, this is, this is the reimbursement agreement that we had a few conversations about. Uh, it was involved, um, well, a golden, uh, grant may provide reimbursement for Wolf Street. There's also, uh, landing, the reimbursement of that document at your table that, uh, Mr. Grant, by advice, is going to speak to the town, I think, uh, the maintenance stewardship accommodates and requests. My golden was provided funds to make sure the day is compliant with their funding requirement.
I still have a mention of grant coming to me, which one is?
It's. It's not going to be in the, it should have been on page one, right?
It's, it's, it, it's not a subject to change, uh, you can go.
You can go ahead and be speaking on it.
Thank you, I'm Jim Reynolds, and I'm your caller. And the agreement that you have in your packet, for the most part, is the same one that you see in the moment, and I made it a agreement. We just clarified some questions totally. And about the flow of funds, we made it clear that, that the town has to draw down funds from Goldenly, they don't get all the money upfront, um, you know. We knew that upfront, so we weren't expecting the, the town to have the funds, but basically, the town can draw down funds in twenty percent increments and then reimburse full speed for, uh, for work as it's done. And so that's included in the agreement, we explicitly also added a provision that says, subject to the terms of Goldenly uh, agreement, so that you have to allow that and you have to be allowed that. And so, and again, this agreement allows Wolf Street to be reimbursed up to that amount of Goldenly grant plus any other funds dedicated to the project and funding sources. And a lot of Wolf Street to take control of the construction and fourth land compensation and get those things done using some, um, contractors that have to be competitive, competitively, it's like the town would have to do it under our weight. Chapter one forty-three of General Sanction, so it allows Wolf Street to move the project forward, takes the burden off the town, but we still have to meet all the little bit requirements and outdriving requirements. So I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have, and hopefully you'll have the updated agreement at the moment.
So the updated agreement really is the same like they're adding with, about Goldenly, just, just a flip guy.
Well, we got an email on Friday afternoon, a little bit of, um, the Goldenly, they trace and return, they're going to go to the town and Wolf Street understood the flow of funds and the reimbursement process and whether there weren't any questions about that, we had to language it, we did agree.
Uh, we anticipated there being changes, we just know exactly what they were building with, but it's all more prudent to, to get the packet out Wednesday, do you hear? Every time we do, you want to smile, it's like, calls, you know, minor changes, make sure we're in compliance, um.
I was gonna say, one thing that I would, I would go to ask certainly up to the town's staff, but if you're inclined to approve it, I would just ask for your approval with, um, the delegation, I'm an authority to the town manager to make non-substantial changes and additional things come up. And we talk with engineering firms and if any Goldenly tests in the other comments.
You look at it, we. You sign all along.
Yeah.
So since we, can you just briefly go over the changes from what's in the packet? I mean, I'm assuming you, you would have been a fan of that?
I can pull it up on my phone and go through them, um, directly if you'd like. So the, the first change that we had is paragraph three A, and if you look in the third line, it says not to exceed the nine million two hundred fifty-two thousand, hundred sixty dollars. Says, from the Goldenly grant, the way we reported that to announce a not to exceed the nine million two hundred fifty-two thousand, hundred sixty dollars awarded by the Goldenly grant. Um, unless any amount expended by the town for design work, plus any additional funds received by or awarded to the town from the Goldenly Foundation. So those are the changes there, just trying to make clear that the town had actually received a long some payment in that amount.
Okay.
Um, the next change um, was down in paragraph four C, I'm just gonna read you the paragraph now as amended. Accent notice that the portion of the work subject to the draw request could not be constructed to standard, the town should pay all draw requests for reimbursement within thirty days of receipt. Or then fourteen days after the town receives funds allocated, eligible to be paid towards a total reimbursement amount from any funding source, whichever is later. The town will promptly request release of funds in accordance with the requirements of any funding source in order to reimburse their company in accordance with the terms of this agreement. And the purpose there again was to make sure that we understood, the town understood, that maybe times when the town doesn't have money to sit in the bank and reimburse Wolf Street. So the town might draw that down in Goldenly in some cases and then pay Wolf Street, but that's not a, not an issue. Um, we'll speak to anyone. Uh, the other, um, change was down in paragraph five. We should have this from now, it's now five G, and it just flipped it though. This agreement is subject to the provisions of all agreements with funding sources, including the grant fee acknowledgement and agreement, project file number and file or F Y. For twenty twenty-three dash year zero eight, project number, named sewer extension project between the town and Goldenly. And those are all the changes to make.
And then paragraph P M.
Sorry, I know this one. Or is this, why was it wrong?
Looks like paragraph.
Well, L became N.
Yeah, that was just a.
I think they inserted G. Yeah, it's a G.
Oh, you added a new G.
Yeah, adding a new G.
Yeah, the new G, there's.
I'll get it on the shift there, Lord.
I'll get it, I'll get it after that thing.
So you've made a motion to approve this agreement for infrastructure?
And I think he also asked, um, to, you know, office town manager to make any non-substantial changes as necessary.
Make a motion when you approve, uh, the agreement for infrastructure, construction fee reimbursement. It will also allow the town manager to approve, uh, all sudden changes on to the agreement.
All right, that I was going to say, I mean, especially the economy. We now are going to vote all the same, I don't, even by the same eye, right? All of those, both done, nobody's here, that ground.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to five point three, soil water, still the C, C, implemented. Include that, implement it, yeah, that and it works.
So, uh, I think I'll page twenty-five, uh, of the packet, of the timeline of the straight launch, just in some path. Um, including the, I was going back to the, the budget workshop, like all the discussions uh, back in the budget with experience and, and next soil water, as proposed, out of the budget. Uh, in order to move forward with any soil water proposal, we have to know what the fish structure would be. Uh, I calculated ERUs for each of the properties affected by the soil water program. Uh, Freeze Nichols is offering to provide a contract and service to us. Uh, that, that project is included on page twenty-six of the cabinet document, as well as a, uh, budget amendment on page twenty-seven. Uh, to effect that, it's certainly. Uh, to effect that, it's definitely a nation. Uh, we also have Charles Barker here, uh, Humphries and Nichols might to speak to, uh, any issues or questions you may have about the stormwater proposal.
Hey, members of the board. We've been here again, last year, it'll be all April thirteenth. So appreciate it. Um, I can either go through the sort of the work that's proposed, or if you don't want to hear that again, uh, can I ask you what, what's your pro?
I don't know, I believe that I need to, because you're gonna go through it in the end, but in the present day, we'll have, you know, presented to the town and statements, whatever, right?
Yes, sir.
I think I saw that.
Yes, sir, we'll, we'll go through and do the analysis, and, and a big part of the analysis is there are like, I only have a deck on five hundred and twenty-eight non-residential properties in that uh, term in their purview area, and that's getting that equivalent residential unit, so that that's property owners that live in single-family homes, that what they pay in somebody with a large commercial, like shopping center, they're gonna pay an equivalent rate to their purview service. So that's, that's a big part of the analysis doing that. Going through that, creating the property, creating the report, providing the public information, asking questions that you all may have, as many as they have. Uh, and then giving to you the next decision whether they implement the stormwater utility.
Well, I think what you outlined here really kind of hits everything we discussed at our last board meeting, and that we kind of had a consensus on. Uh, I think it'll really help address the issues, uh, the concerns of the public. Um, I think stormwater is, I think we just gotta keep moving forward with it because we, we do have a flooding issue in town. I'm just, well, thank Freeze and Nichols for their assistance with this and our other projects as well. Um, so I think it's pretty much hits everything we talked about, and it's, you know, it's a problem that we as a board, we know we have, and we have to jump in and solve it, and I don't know any other way than to get it done.
I, I agree, I think that this, this, as it's laid out, is exactly what we were looking, looking for in terms of what a scope should look like and, and ensuring that we have the appropriate amount of, you know, public input, we have, you know, board, uh, board discussions, so I, I think that this, this satisfies exactly what I was looking for.
I think I did have one question for you on the scheduled payout. That under section five, that last appropriation was, it tracks fifteen, 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 then it was bumped to thirty. Is that supposed to be fifteen in section five?
No, that actually no, five D.
But other than, I mean, uh, that, once again, just, uh, Charles, thanks for your hard work on this and, uh, other projects, and Freeze and Nichols has been a really great partner.
Yeah, I'm gonna assume that when we get the, um, the board, they'll pay some kind of certain, that how we can mitigate some of the things that you find.
What we're doing is the analysis to give you all the tools that you can. Have the tool, a revenue stream, and a part of that is, what is gonna be, what is gonna be the stormwater program? What are gonna be the projects you're gonna undertake, the services, the level of service that you need to provide to the community? So that's like, that would give you a tool, it's available in that, that, it takes care of some of these problem areas in every community.
To the mayor's point, um, on recognition, would you be able to give us your opinion on the priorities of the project? Uh, or is that kind of?
That's not in the, not in the scope of work, but that's something that we could, could easily do. Uh, it, it, I think there's a, uh, a pending, um, grant project that's related that that would, that's gonna do that part of the work.
Okay. But this already being done, you know, everything?
So, so how would you, if you would recall, the town was previously awarding two grants, one for an AIA for sewer, and also a LACI grant for stormwater, so we have a five hundred thousand dollar grant in D E P that was, uh, aggressive, as you were starting to speak about, that would really be an inventory of stormwater in solidified.
That'll be the roadmap. And I need more of that. About this is the gas, put it in the garden, I don't know if that's what it heard.
Good. Well, I think, if, you, if you got an answer to that question on section five?
It, it is. They just corrected us, that's true.
That's thirty?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion when you approve the budget amendment, twenty twenty-four point three for stormwater utility P implementation study.
Amen. I have a motion to say, is there any study coming?
No.
And hearing you know, we're looking through those, all of the favorite thing, I, all of those lights on. The voting here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mission around, what was your take?
Hmm?
Well, I didn't see your hand.
Oh, did I write that?
No.
Press on the door. So I'm gonna do this.
Alright. Go ahead.
Hmm?
You got it? Okay. In, that would be, that, maybe just adding.
We will quick, um, you have at your table, uh, the document labeled utility merger update. Uh, it includes some documentation that has worked with a consultant, uh, Pat Ryan, who provides public relations on our communication to the public about possible, uh, merger of utilities, so we want to make sure that, um, Michigan had opportunity to review that, we're gonna be considering, uh, reference information possible to the public and, and F A P while sending out elaborate, uh, these utility customers, so they're instructed with possible on what's going on, the merger, opinion merger, I hope we posted on town website. Uh, we do update information on that possibility. Uh, we had a very successful FIAA event Saturday, we had, uh, no issues. I want to thank our food department, fire department, and public works for their participation and assistance in putting that, uh, event on and making sure it was safe for all patients. Uh, we're currently now advertising for the vacancies on all of our advisory boards on our website and posted a notice about. We, we account for it for a few months, make sure we have our advisor, we're constantly adopted. Now that it is, um, the vacancies that do exist on those boards are now open for application. And we have on the website a new application for, that's consistent rather than, you know, sending it whatever with, uh, information, so much easier, we do have a point of extension also. Uh, I want to thank down there for their assistance, um, you know, while I burned scenario on Saturday, and we're providing food to our firefighters, uh, during the yesterday event. Uh, and once again, uh, those who were here tonight, uh, Mr. Rena, that is time to come out, uh, the Barker, uh, Mr. Daniel, and Wolf Street, and others, and the board, for, still waiting for, uh, a few partners on storm foundation. Thank you very much.
God, I want to thank, this is not explaining, I know she managed for a little while, I'm not seeing him.
Uh, we're looking for, we're only wanting to see anybody. Yes. Um,
Uh, I'm gonna say, hang on.
Okay. Uh, I forgot, I forgot to mention just a brief update of the point of audit. Uh, uh, we had discussed the panel, we've been saying to the latest, um, there's a correction needed to be done for power bill, uh, for year-end entries, uh, a hundred and nine thousand dollars, that's being done. Uh, Jennifer, they're working on making some entries for capital project numbers, is that a requirement? To be able, um, afford any amount left over from all capital projects that have been deployed this year. Uh, we're also providing with, in cost of equipment, D is needed, we're coordinating, did confuse, who was the author that uh, there's a twenty twenty audit, that we're coordinating with them to get that information. Uh, we're also for even making entry for payroll for one K, that they need employee, employee contributions for, uh, law enforcement and all other employees. So, uh, HR department, and our internal, uh, finance director working on that. And also, our in-house, uh, making any necessary changes to the backstables, uh, from Chatham County, and itemize totals to each of them. Uh, this world is working on this, um, and working through, uh, any other issues that we're handling, so the number of items that we're working on right there. Uh, Kathy, starting finance director, also working with, uh, Garnet, and linear, and versus calling them, so I have more information on it, I just shared. Um, this is going higher on the new finance director, who is starting October second, so we'll have to elevate helpful transition moving as well, thank you. Thank you, Paul.
And returning what a case we're getting to. Everybody coming?
I am just wondering, um, I'm not sure, if everybody has checked your solid city email, but you did receive an invitation to come to the open house for Chatham County Schools on September twenty-eighth at ten o'clock. So I just wanted to remind, just like that.
Okay, I'm saying it's time to get me to be a man, though.
You, you, you need to come right out.
Yeah, I understand that.
Is at the county office.
Alright, any other counties?
If not, is that one?
You, you have some? Alright, I hear you're going to close session, I'm making a motion, we're going to close session, suing more time, general statute one forty-three, three eighty, eliminate, uh, all these.
Yeah, it's a recording.
Yeah, we're, we're back good, deciding.
Okay.
I'll be everybody else.
Yeah, that's a lot of good to kick everybody out. We're going with some video. Oh. So, I, I think this can be real, real quick, um, we've discussed previously, purchased two parcels that were necessary for wastewater treatment plant upgrade. Nor all right, maybe to negotiate up to two hundred thousand dollars. I was talking with Ed Stone, we asked for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a group parcel. Uh, we were able to talk him down to two hundred and point five thousand, but I think that's as low as he's willing to go. So, um, without authorization to that amount, uh, and bring that back to you tonight, so what's the?
We really don't have their partnership, we don't really have their partnership.
Well, I can't make that decision.
There's no, they are, they're long. So let's for, somehow create a new one. I think we gotta go to two point five, I don't see what I'm looking for.
All we need is mo, uh, motions that move, that would be great.
Then we add a closed session.
It was the, I, I didn't, well, it don't have any discussion, uh, I, I wish I could give you an alternative, but Mr. Stone said, you gotta have a land, and you can choose that itself. I, I thought from the way the conversation started, you was gonna, you know, dig in at two fifty, but I think we're lucky to give it out at two point five. He, he, he understands what yours like for.
We do a lot of it.
Yeah.
And I think, I think we, we kind of had planned on going to, to the next anyway, for part two point five, I know that was something we did.
We talked.
Yeah, hold now. That purchase, that won't fit anything that's over spoken with them.
No.
It, well, it, it wouldn't have been.
Not by you.
Okay, is everybody, are we in, sort of agreeing?
Yes. Well, Jay, Jay, you just had a quick question for closing.
Yeah, I was asking, they want through the Chinese fees, those stuff like that.
That, that, that would be different, that would be extra.
That's the purchase products.
That, that, that's what Mr. Stone did.
And then we'll, we'll have, um, was that, is that what he, so he's gonna, so all the costs are on our side? He's netting two twenty-five?
Correct.
So he's not gonna pay, uh, at the lower, he's not, he's not gonna pro rate the taxes?
His comment with that, you know, your problem on the conversation.
Yeah, so, so the tax part of the, the pro rate, we, the town would still have to pay this at the lower, even though we don't pay taxes. We would have to because we're in a different tax year, so unless it's on the county books by July first, or Ju- January first, then we have to pay it regardless, we've experienced that with a lot of other properties we have to.
Is that because more fiscal years different?
Um, no, the county doesn't waive the tax bill unless our, unless it was already in our name on Ju- on January first.
Well, I mean, but usually on closing, if you go from January one to December thirty-first, and pro rate based on how long the seller has owned it, and then usually the seller pays the, the tax stamps too. On two twenty-five.
He told us on the phone that he was not paying any of that stuff.
I, I don't have a better way to say that.
So I need anybody to dump. Yeah, so they're two.
That's correct. I mean, we can go back and negotiate, I don't think you're gonna do this now.
No.
I know.
No way.
She found out, I did have a question, but I'm, both said about perfect mail. I just realized, I just thought, but we don't have time, I just don't care. Uh, I don't have a word. Uh, I'll get it, follow that.
Jay, did that answer you?
Yes, sir.
Anything else in phone?
But we will bring a budget amendment for that and, and put it on the consent agenda for the next meeting for that land purchase.
But we don't have to make a motion in my.
Um, no, as long as that y'all are good with that amount and everything, then, then we'll bring back that budget amendment.
Okay, if we just make sure, put it in there, he's, that's what he's gonna net. I don't want somebody coming back later, you have a document, and it says it's, we paid out more than two twenty-five, and they said you want to pay more than two twenty-five. I mean, if you look at the HUD, HUD's gonna show, I'm paying out two thirty to two thirty-five.
I, I think if you look at it, what any property sellable right now compared to tax value is three, three and a half pounds.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, I, I just want to make sure we were on motion correctly next time, because we know the HUD's gonna show more than two twenty-five.
And the budget amendment will have more than two twenty-five on it, so it'll be obvious that the budget amendment will have the attorney fees on it.
Any other question? I hear we're going out of closing.
I'm gonna be able to come out of closing. That's, that's.
Alright, I have a motion to say, all of the players are, uh, I don't know if they would like fun. Alright, we are closing.
I'm gonna leave here.
We gotta make a motion on the do we make a motion to approve the purchase?
No. No, we, we, we don't need that, well, when y'all approve the budget amendment, you're giving us that authority. So, we're good.
Well, um, on the I'm starting to get, I do have, I guess I should assess the governing body, but I'm starting to get questions about uh, what we talked about in open session, it was on the radio, and so I, I just need to know. I guess I need to know what I can tell people.
Um, cause. So, that, that's what I mentioned, the documents from power, and, and, so you know, murder, um, that's what we're putting out to the public, so I would try and make comment to what's noted there.
On the first page?
Let me think of that.
Well, there's some F A Q on the last two pages, I think.
Yeah, I, I want to make sure that we, that when, when we, if there's a press release or whatever, that we, we make sure that uh, we get it, I know what, the, the radio had a few details, um, that we had talked about in, in closed session last time. Um, that, uh, made it for the radio, I don't know why or how that happened. But, um, disappointed in that, but, uh, I want to make sure that they get a corrected version, so that they know what we, what we're doing, because I, we cannot have them bad mouthing this, this, the potential, so that, that, we just can't have that.
So, one thought I had, you know, in addition to this, to cover ourselves as a board is since it's already in the press, should we just go ahead and make those, uh, minutes from closed session public? And we didn't say anything bad in closed session, I mean, everything we talked about is for the benefit of the town.
I don't really see any need to do that.
But is that, I mean, it's already out there.
Well, and, and honestly, I don't have a, honest to this, because is that, is that what reading them? And, well, and, and honestly, I don't, because is that, is that what reading this? I think this is directed at the majority that concerns.
Okay.
Yeah, because, you know, we do not need to raise utility rates for this to patch. I mean, we, we, you know, this is, we, this, utility is self-sufficient, and we would not raise taxes for Jordan's reasonable network. I think we've got some, some big, bold items out there, but I just want to make sure that the, 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 whatever press release that we have, that it specifically, you know, notates that so that we can, you know, be clear with, uh, the radio that this, this is the, the truth.
Well, yeah, I guess I just was a little taken aback, I mean, I predicted it would leave by the next morning, but I didn't think it'd be on W N C A. I thought we'd have time to, you know, kind of get out of the front a little bit more.
Alright, anything else? It's been already, got a motion, it's been earned.